I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners for the month of September 2020. And our first item of business is to deal with remote attendance under COVID-19 conditions. Do we have a motion to temporarily suspend our remote policy pursuant to the currently active exciting order so that we can all attend remotely?
So move.
Has been moved. Is there any discussion? Okay, requiring a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote aye, so we have approved the remote attendance. Next item is to accept our agenda for the, do we have a motion to do that or a suggestion for changing it?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion or any questions on this point? Hearing, and again, under the remote attendance, we got to do a roll call even something like this. So start with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
She said aye, I don't know if you heard her.
Mic's off.
Did not hear.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
And Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so we've, we've accepted our agenda for the evening. And first up is public comment. And I'm wondering if there is anyone in attendance this evening with to make comment to the board.
There's nobody in the digital meeting that I'm aware of.
Seeing no indication of this. Okay.
Nobody here at Kerr either.
Okay. So that will take us then to new staff introductions.
Janet's here to do that.
Hello, everybody. Um, I also just sent everybody in the whole park district an email about the Great Art Doors, which is our new program. So after this meeting at your convenience, you can see a couple of the pieces and find out more about it. I'm sure you might have some constituents ask you about it, and now you'll be in the know. It's not completely ready yet, but this way we've got you guys in the loop. And I am here to introduce our new Phillips Center Office Manager. And this was, uh, you know, hiring during COVID, pretty interesting. We had a long listing of the job. We extended the listing of the job and we did all of our interviews over Zoom, which was pretty interesting back in May. And then the start date for the position was August 10th. So I am here to introduce our new office manager, Heather Britsky. So she's here in the meeting and she can tell you a little bit about herself.
Hi, um. I am Heather. I used to work as the Office Surface Specialist at the Phillips Center for several years. And then in 2017, I followed my husband up to Iowa for his job. And then when Kathy said she was retiring, it just, it was the time to come home. So that's basically what Urbana Park District is to me, it's home. So I'm ecstatic to be back.
Glad to have you back.
Yes.
Heather, how many, how many years did you work for us before you went to Iowa?
Three and a half.
Three and a half.
And Heather, it's pretty exciting now that she's an exempt staff position because she really looks forward to like, when we do have things that we can volunteer at and help out at and assist with, that is one of the things that she's very excited to do. So once we can start doing stuff, she's very eager to help out. And, um, she's already spruced up the Phillips Center offices quite a great deal. So I'm very excited to have her onboard. Look at Corky, he's, he's not even there, but I bet he appreciates how neat you are.
I, I am, I am very, very much a very neat person at work.
Okay. Me too. Anyway, so that's, that's all we're here for is to just introduce you all to Heather. So if you ever do come to the Phillips Center again, you can give her a holler and say hi.
Well, again, welcome back onboard Heather.
All right. Okay.
Thank you.
Take us. That takes us then to the Urbana Park District Advisory Committee Report. And I see that the new chairperson Cedric Stratton is care to say a few words, Cedric?
Hello, everyone, to the few of you that I don't already know and see on a bi-weekly basis. I'm excited to, uh, to chair the committee and I just look forward to doing great things with the park district.
And I'll just say that we are very excited to have Cedric acting as chairperson this year. It was outgoing chairperson, you know, Jean Paley, when, when I talked with her about what her thoughts were, she didn't even hesitate. She just said, oh, I think Cedric would be fabulous. So, you know, we were very happy when he agreed.
I've had to turn off my video because there are problems somehow at this end. But I wanted to say that Cedric passed the test if he managed to get.
Oops, we lost her.
Yeah.
Okay. So yes, he passed, he passed his initial meeting with flying colors, did a great job.
Well, great, Mark.
Yeah.
Glad to have you in that new role.
Yeah, we, we look forward to a good, a good year with Up Deck and Cedric at the helm.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Cedric? Okay, here none. Let's move on to our consent agenda for the evening. On our consent agenda tonight, our approval of the study session, the August 11th, 2020 regular board meeting, and finally approval of ministerial board meeting. The acceptance of the three departmental monthly reports, approval of the monthly paid accounts payable, and action to accept the August philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude. And for those listening at home, under the rules of our consent agenda, it is the privilege of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items from the consent agenda for separate action. Is there any commissioner that wants anything removed from the consent agenda this evening? Hearing no indication of such, is there anyone prepared to move that we approve all the items on the consent agenda in an omnibus fashion?
I move to approve all the action items on the consent agenda and accept all the information items listed on the consent agenda in an omnibus manner.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded and under the rules of our consent agenda, at this point, there is to be no discussion. So it is time to vote on the motion, starting with a roll call, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, and so that is unanimously approved. And that takes us then to financial reports.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. My video is on, but I have really horrible internet when it's storming. And so I just called in so that you guys could hear me more clearly. Okay, so tonight I'm going to be presenting four financial reports. I'm going to show you the COVID forecast at the end, which is a summary report. But before I get there, I'm going to present you the revenue expenditure report for the period ending August 31st. That's four months of our fiscal year. And I can share the report on the screen if you'd like. Let's see. Here it is. Can you all see this? See, okay, all right. So the first page of this report is what we call sum one. It is all funds except for the capital improvement fund. Revenues for this period were $3,741,000, which is an increase of $1,324,000 since July. 3.2 million of total revenues are property taxes, and we've received three property tax disbursements for the year 2019. We're at 43% of property taxes received thus far. The biggest difference between this year and last year has been our earned revenues. For the same period, May 1st through August 1st, 20, or sorry, August 31st, 2019, the district earned $700,000 in fees, which includes program fees and rental charges, which is 123,000 more than at this point, at the same point this year. And we all are aware of the reasons behind that, and we'll get more into that when we talk about the COVID forecast. Down on the second half of this page shows expenditures for the operating budget. Expenditures were $2,270,000, which is a change of $480,000 since July. And we have a surplus after three months. This means that there was an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $1,471,000. Sum two shows only the capital improvement fund. Revenue for the four-month period were negative $12,000. This negative interest represents an interest accrual from last year, interest earned in FY '20, but that has not yet been received. As soon as that revenue is received, this will clear out this accrual. And these were for some long-term CDs, so that's why it's taking so long. So pretty soon we'll, you'll see that flip out, back to positive. Expenditures for this period were $108,000. Expenditures exceed revenues in the capital improvements budget, and this leaves a net decrease in fund balance in the capital improvement fund of $120,000. And finally, sum three is the first two pages added together. This is all fund district-wide. Note that the ending fund balance for the entire district at the end of August was $17,165,000. Following that are the main operating funds of the district, the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund, and the indoor pool. And I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have about those reports before I move on to the treasurer's report. Okay, hearing none.
I have a quick question. I don't know if
Oh, yeah, please.
if this is appropriate now, but I just have a quick question about the diversity audiobooks and the resources that were purchased.
Okay, on the, on the consent agenda where we did the paid accounts payable.
On the journal?
The, the paid accounts payable report?
Yeah.
Uh huh, yeah, what's your question?
Was that purchased for training? Was that purchased for retreat or?
Yeah, so the You Belong Here Matrix team purchased the audiobooks and resource materials to share with staff. I think right now they're still gathering their resources to distribute to staff, but they're trying to create lots of different resources that are available to staff that we can share around the district. So I think that was what that purchase was for.
I guess I could, I could ask you at the end of the meeting, that's fine. But I, I guess I just need more clarification, like if there's going to be future training? Is this at their own leisure or what's the purpose of it?
Sure, sure. All right, well, we can find out all of those, that information for you and make sure that you know what all those are intended for.
Okay, thanks.
So I guess moving on to the treasurer's report, if there's no other questions on the revenue expenditure report. The treasurer's report is a report of the amount of cash that the district has on one day, August 31st, 2020. All 24 funds are listed with where the cash is invested, and we have a grand total at the end of August of $17,035,912.54. The second page of this report, the top half lists funds that are out at, in, at interest-bearing investments. We've seen all of our interest rates tank. I mean, they just get worse and worse every day. And we're all aware of the strains on the economy at the moment. And of the $17,036,000 on hand, $15,540,000 is out in investments at some low rate. The next section lists inter-fund loans, and there was no changes to inter-fund loans this period. And final section lists disbursement. Mender payments match the paid accounts payable on the consent agenda, and total disbursement of funds for August was $440,000. The final section lists, oh, excuse me, now I present the treasurer's report to you for approval.
Just a quick question before we go on to that. I'm probably just confused, but when I see the fund total down at the bottom of the treasurer's report, I normally expect that to match with the total at the bottom of the page three on the sum three. And it's about $130,000 difference, and I'm just curious what would have caused that this month?
Can you say again, you said you look at the bottom of sum three, and the $440,000 on the third pages of the treasurer's report matches the number you usually see on sum three?
Okay, and in sum three, at the bottom of the year-to-date balance, it's $17,164,933.63. And I thought that number would normally match the treasurer's report fund total. Am I dropping a sketch?
On the first pages, on the first page of the treasurer's report?
Correct.
No, it doesn't usually match exactly, just because that can be, this is just earned revenues and expenditures, and the other is really just balance sheet items. So it's kind of comparing apples and oranges, although they're going to be comparable. But I can give you a little bit more detail. There's, basically there's like a reconciliation that you'd have to work through to, to make the one match the other. And off the top of my head, I don't know that I would know that, but I can bring that information next time.
I deserve to do that here. So, so they're not like close to each other, but not, not precisely.
Correct.
Okay. I appreciate, I appreciate that clarification.
Yeah, for sure. I think it's still on you.
Well.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. There any comments or questions? Hearing none, again, we need to do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so we have unanimously approved receipt of the treasurer's report for honor. Moving on to capital budget report.
There was very little activity in, sorry, I gotta scroll back down here. I should have done that before I shared. There was very little activity in the capital budget, but I will go over the, the few transactions that occurred. Here we go. So in the series 2019 A Budget, there was an expenditure in the Crystal Lake One Way Road System Design for $3,290. In the 2020 budget, there was a treatment for Emerald Ashmore chemicals where it was applied to some of our trees, and that came out of the expenditure line. And we also had some receipts in the tributes and donations line in this budget as well. And finally, in the 2018, excuse me, there's two more. In the 2019 budget, we paid for the final construction, or we paid for additional construction and the final design work on the Lille Park Parking Walk. And the last expenditure that occurred was on construction crew projects in the 2018 budget, right here. And with that, I believe Andy and Derek may have some further updates for you on capital projects.
Yep, can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
Yeah. Going to start with the outdoor pool, the exterior wood resealing project. Our last meeting, the board awarded that bid. At this point, almost all the prep work has been completed. That involved the power washing, and they're finishing up the sanding. This week, we'll be reviewing test site of the sealer in the next day or so before they start to apply their two coats of sealant and final application for all the exterior wood surfaces. At this point, it's looking really good. It's looking like we're going to get, see a lot of improvements, restoring that wood back to its original aesthetic.
Andy, what sort of life expectancy does that, does this new finish have?
I'm hoping many years. It's, it's much stronger than what was originally applied. It's, it's really designed for outdoor log cabins, so it's supposed to face the elements. So I can't give a guaranteed timeline, but I would, I would assume it would work or last longer than what the current pool stood. I don't know if that answers your question.
Of course, no.
Okay. One of the other outdoor pool projects that we had going during the shutdown is to install three new structures. So since our last board meeting, we had contracted with Mid Illinois Concrete to dig and pour the foundations and place the posts for three new shade sails, basically. And then our aquatic staff will be able to come in and do the actual installation of the shade portion itself on those posts. Last Friday, the final post and foundation was poured and placed. So as soon as our aquatics maintenance staff is, is ready to go, they can get the shade portions up and we'll be ready for the next pool season. As part of that shade work, I think we had mentioned previously that Keith on our construction crew will be building a new customer service kiosk below the ramp that goes down towards the recreation pool. What we'd been using was kind of a temporary wood structure, and this is going to have a stone kind of facade to it to be more aesthetically pleasing and permanent and look more like it belongs in our, in our pool than what we had previously. Blair Park, the Auslaid Project. Since our last board meeting, the state contract for the grant had arrived and it's now executed. Because of that, we were then able to authorize the design work for that project in the last few weeks. Last week, we actually held a kickoff meeting with our staff team and then Upland Design and ERA. ERA will be out at Blair next week to start their survey work. Our schedule overall for the project really hasn't changed too much. We were anticipating doing a spring, summer construction before the delay for the contract documents. Talking at our kickoff meeting, we still think that we're looking to have a winter bid and construction probably starting late spring, early summer. So hasn't really held us back too much. Move to Crystal Lake Re project. Since our last meeting, Stark has continued with Rockto installation. They're continuing with the grading and topsoil placement around the lake edge. This week, they're actually focusing on the removal of the sediment and the portion of the lake that is currently dammed and drained. That's to the west of the sediment basin around the North Island. As part of our monthly updates, Derek and I discussed, you know, providing the board updates on change orders and where we're at with contingency, which we, we do with our finance study group as well. But so the, so the board's just aware. We've executed one change order at this point, and that included some work with the sanitary district. That's a part of that intergovernmental agreement, and that's to replace the manhole riser and lid. And that was for a little over $38,000, which is then fully reimbursable from the sanitary district per that IGA. We had a change on our disposal area from the overflow parking lot on Broadway to a location within Bucy Woods that was in need of some additional fill material and be able to do some seeding work in that area once Stark's completed. And that was for $33,432. And then the change order also included a reduction in our costs of a little over $9,000. And that was for a revised bridge crossing to the North Island. So what was specified in the bid and what Stark had priced in our original bid was a little more expensive than we were anticipating. And Stark actually had an idea to do a different type of bridge crossing that then we had our engineers review and approve, and that resulted in a reduction in our contract cost of a little over 9,000. So with all those changes, as far as the park district contingency, that increases our contract costs by $24,300, and that kind of updates our new contingency for construction to just a little bit over $345,000 where we're at right now. And we do anticipate some more change orders, and we'll keep updating in the future. Is there any questions before I bring out some pictures? Okay, I'm going to try to share screen, Katie, if you can. Okay, so as promised, I'll try to bring some more up-to-date photos of the site to our board meetings. Can everyone see the pictures?
Yeah.
I guess our first picture.
Yep.
If you remember from the last meeting, this is the fountain. You can actually see the pole here still sticking up in the center. I think the last photo I provided may have had half the fountain was, was existing. Now it's been pretty much completely demolished. And this is looking down towards the lake, towards their temporary bridge in the North Island. This is a view I got standing basically at the water, where the water's edge would be, looking up towards the makeup water structure. So you can see kind of the elevation changes and the grading that has happening here. And this is where that series of tiered pools that are going to be incorporating with rocks and our limestone blocks around the edges and then planted, and then have more of that gentle makeup water flow flowing down these tiers, basically towards where I'm standing into the lake. And then just to the south of the fountain area, this is a path that will, they're prepping for concrete, and this is part of the Auslaid Grant. So this is an accessible walkway from the asphalt path near the fountain, and it's going to head down towards a stone outcropping. So this is me at the bottom of that path now looking towards the south. This is kind of where the stone outcropping would be and have a turnaround to get back. And this, on the other side of this stone outcropping, it then begins the soft path system. This is just a view from the sanitary bridge, just trying to do a couple similar angles that I provided last time. You can see there's a lot more topsoil and grading work that's been done, looking towards the accessible fishing pier. And then from the memorial bridge near the lake house, looking in the other direction just to kind of give a, an idea of what our shoreline's looking like at the moment. I think last meeting, they, they were doing concrete work around the playground. So the curb and then the area where there'd be the bag sets and the picnic tables with the game stencils. A week or week and a half or so ago, they were finishing up the concrete work. So this is the path from the other side of the playground that's heading towards the road where you would cross. And then here's their concrete work for the new small pavilion, the replacement of the small pavilion. And you can see they've completed their path to that pavilion and then they have the base to the pavilion now poured. That's all the pictures I have for for this month and I'll be sure I keep doing some updates next month as well. But I'm happy to answer any questions on CLP or anything else.
Andy, well, we've been, go ahead.
I was just curious, since we're low hanging fruit, we're doing the signage for the one way routing. I was just curious when we, if we think we might implement this that this year or it's just, it's farther down the road in terms of.
We're, we're into engineering on that. So right now, our schedule is to have that bid out later this winter and potentially have that road project in construction next summer. And that would then incorporate the new signage and striping and implementing that system. I talked to Fairgram about two weeks ago and they said they're gonna have something for us to review as a staff on the next level of design, middle of September. So I'm actually anticipating an email or a phone call any day.
I would just like to interject the comment that the pictures don't really do justice for how much change has taken place there already.
Yeah.
It's, it's so much more open. It's quite amazing. And I'm really looking forward to seeing things as they progress.
You're right. There's, there's areas that you can stand far away from the lake and it's amazing how far into the park you can see. It's incredible.
Get you back on two topics quickly. Andy mentioned Fairgram. They're also updating our engineering estimate for the iTap path connections. This would be from the corner of Parker and Broadway up to the saline. That application we do later this fall and we're bringing a resolution to you all, I believe, at the next board meeting. But we wanted to get the updated costs and also approach Carl to see if they want to again be a local match for that project. And then Nancy, while, while Andy was talking, I pulled up the the spec data on the the product that we're using and looks like three to four years is what they're advertising for that particular product. We, when we talked to all sorts of different painting companies, the original architects, also had technical reps out from Sherwin, Sherwin-Williams. And in the end, a technical rep for PPG provided this product that we thought had the most likely, lively longevity. We also, in the course of this, realized that there is a a coffee chain in town that has a lot of exposed wood on their building and noticed that it was similarly starting to show discoloration like ours and talked with the national rep for that company to find out how they prepped their wood and they said they just tear it down, replace it. So we can't do that. We, we did talk about if if this doesn't work and it becomes too much care and feeding, it's too expensive. As awful as it might sound, we, we might come back and recommend painting at some point, but we, we wanted to really do what we can to preserve the, the beauty of the facility and the wood. We think that this project is the best shot of doing so.
Good. Worth, worth a try.
Anything else on the capital improvement report? Hearing none on that. There's the COVID-19 budget forecast. Back to Katie here.
Sorry, I hung up on my phone call. Can you guys hear me? Okay. Yeah, okay. So on the, just a second, let me pull this up. I wasn't prepared for it to come back to me. Well, Shonda, I got all the answers to your questions about the couple of purchases on the paid accounts payable, if you'd like me to give you some more information on that.
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay, the You Belong Here team purchased several books and audiobooks with the goal of creating loanable items in ActiveNet for staff. They haven't started loaning them out yet. They're going to release the list of materials in their quarterly newsletter that goes out to staff. And that with, they're gonna kind of highlight three or four of the items in the newsletter to try to gain staff interest. Some of the books that were purchased were recommendations that came from the Coursera course that staff took. So that's the resources that they chose to invest in. And some of those books include Blind Spot by Benagi and Greenwald, The Next America by Taylor, How to Be Less Stupid About Race by Fleming, and White Fragility by D'Angelo. And there's a few others as well. Those are the ones that she was able to give me off the fly. Does that help?
Yeah, that helps. So I guess, will you guys keep us up to date? I mean, like even like a bullet point item, I saw in Cedric's his report, you know, will we have something like that for the board moving forward?
We'd love to do that. Yeah. And we're having the matrix teams are coming to the October study session as well. So you'll be hearing more about this particular initiative as well when they come.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. One more second on that COVID forecast. Sorry. Here we go. Technology. Okay. Can you all see the screen now? Okay. Derek Corky and I have worked really hard on this. All of the staff really have worked really hard on this because we had to go back and kind of do a full budget workup to really get things right on this forecast. So the column that staff worked on is this column on the end. And I presented to you the prior year's total activity for the year, the current year's activity to date through August 31st. This is the budget as presented to the board originally that was approved. And then this is where we think we're actually gonna wind up is this forecast column. We did give staff some assumptions to build into their forecasting since a lot's still unknown. So we told them as of, you know, our opening in August, for any programs that are being offered to only estimate 50% of enrollment, of expected enrollment. And then that's through the end of the calendar year and then January through April to anticipate 75%. So of any programs that we actually are able to offer. So which our programming in general is limited. So and pretty much as we expected, you can see on the, sorry, I should give you a little more background. This summary page that I'm presenting is what we call SOME ONE. So it's just the operating funds and it does not include capital because that would just sway things out of the way. So this is what we normally would look at on SOME ONE. But you can see, for example, on the fees column, we've only received 77,000. We had a budget of 1.3 million. And we now have an updated forecasted amount of 430,000. So we'll see where we're at with that. But I think that jives pretty well with what my original expectations were of us being about a million down from in fees for what we would expect by the end of the year. So and we are starting to do some rentals and some limited programming. So we're starting to see our fees pick up. But really what I wanted to focus on here is the bottom line. Because this is what really matters of whether we can weather this year or these coming years is where our budget's gonna be at. So the original budget as presented to the board had an operating deficit of $81,000 at the end of the year. A lot of this is because in some of our smaller funds, we budget to spend the whole fund, even if we don't intend to. And that has to do more with the legal appropriation side. So for example, the Crystal Lake Pool Replacement and Renewal Fund, it only has about $100,000 on it. So even though we don't necessarily have $100,000 of projects that we're planning on spending on that for this year, if an emergency came up and we needed to turn to that source of funds, then we want to have the appropriations available. And so we actually appropriate to spend that entire fund, even though we don't necessarily intend to at the beginning of the year, just because of those other unknowns, especially in the smaller funds. We tend to budget that way. In the larger funds, we have kind of a placeholder of miscellaneous other expenditures on the appropriations of, you know, it could be $500,000. I think it's 700,000 for capital. So that's how we handle it in the larger funds is they kind of just get a blanket miscellaneous expenditure for appropriations, but the smaller funds don't. So I just wanted to point out that it's very normal and natural for there to be a slight decrease in our budget for our operating budget each year, just based on the way that we budget. However, with forecast, that actually, that outlook actually improved by over $10,000. So when staff went through their budgets, they were very meticulous, especially on the operations side where staff were receiving incentive pay to work in May. And also we didn't hire really any part timers at all in the operating, but in the general fund either. And those things kind of wound up washing each other out. So and then same with on the rec side, while we don't have fees, we also didn't have any of the offsetting direct costs of those programs. So I wanted to walk you through. So on a district wide level, we're looking just fine. And I wanted to walk you through the four main operating funds as well. So you can see the major changes. So in the general fund, you can see our part time salaries decreased quite a bit drastically. And our full time salaries went up slightly because of the overtime paid in May. But at the end of the day, we had budgeted a $16,000 increase in the general fund, but after all of the other adjustments to where we think our budget's going, we're actually thinking we'll wind up with a $40,000 increase to fund balance at the end of the fiscal year in the general fund only. And then similarly, in the recreation fund, while it did have a slight decrease, it was nothing compared to what we, you know, what maybe could have happened. The other reason that this really worked out for us is that the original budget didn't have the $100,000 gift from Carl in it. They have a five year, $500,000 gift that they're giving us. And since we didn't actually have a commitment from them at the beginning of the year, that wasn't budgeted. And so that really actually helped offset a lot of the losses that we were seeing in this budget because some of those expenditures were already budgeted, even though we didn't have the offsetting revenue. So you, you can see, go ahead.
Just add one comment on that. Whenever we were doing our, getting ready for the summer, we knew we had to get some service, something out to our community with kids at home. And that's how we came up with the Border and Buster Bags and, and those kinds of items. What we told staff when we started doing projections was to budget $10,000 per department to provide those resources to our community.
Yeah.
So the reason Carl made a difference was that $10,000 was all stuff that was approved by Carl.
To be funded. Yeah.
Yeah. So it became funded versus using property taxes to fund it.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Move. So I was really happy with the museum, with the recreation fund. I thought Corky and his staff did a really excellent job budgeting under those tough circumstances. And museum fund, of course, did very well as well. So you can see, you know, there are a lot of changes, but in the end, while they had originally budgeted an increase of $4,000, they're right at $500. So they're still in the positive. And the museum fund has a very healthy fund balance anyway above its maximum target. So we don't worry too much about museum fund, but they've done a really nice job budgeting and kind of rolling with the punches here. And then lastly, the indoor pool, the main difference that happens here is that the amount needed to pay by the two school districts that goes into this account number gets decreased. So they were able to reduce some expenditures, but then what happens is the amount of our contribution goes down slightly. Right now, each district is putting in about $240,000 a piece, depending sometimes more, sometimes less, and then plus an extra 40 for capital improvements. And that changes and gets balanced out to the penny at the end of the fiscal year, but that's just how we budget it. So that each district has their share going in. And you can see our share will go down because of having less expenditures to cover. And then in the end, that downward shift will hopefully actually help the recreation fund who funds the majority of that payment. So we did not adjust the payment downward on the rec side though, because it's also covered by social security and liability funds. And I'm ref fund. And so until we know the full effect of how not having those staff members, those part time staff to cover, I didn't want to let recreation off the hook yet. So, so that, you know, I hope that, I really hope that I've been able to give the board some reassurance that the budget's pretty solid. Until this exercise was completed, I really couldn't say that. You know, until we really went in in the detail and went through line item by line item and adjusted, I wasn't confident that I could really say that to the board, although I had a good inkling that it was gonna be okay, just because of the way we budget. We tend to do, you know, budget our fees and earned revenues off of direct costs. And we don't have a whole lot of indirect costs in our program budgets. So in the end, that works out pretty well. Now, I mean, there's a lot of other ongoing implications of the COVID pandemic that we don't know where things are gonna wind up. Like, for example, are people gonna be defaulting on their property taxes because they can't pay their mortgages anymore? We don't know that yet. We're not seeing any effect of that currently this year, but I think that's kind of a longer term issue. And about 70% of our budget is property tax rep, is subsidized by property tax revenues. So we, we do need to be really careful going forward to be conservative, you know, to know that this isn't over yet. But on a year to year basis, I think we're pretty solid going into this year. I guess that's all I have to say, but I'm happy to entertain any questions. And I, I guess I want to say too, that the COVID forecast that we have that I presented tonight is kind of evolving still. It's not final. But this is like the first point that I was able to have a wrapped up summary version. But I hope to be able to continue to present that to you, maybe not every month, but every few months as this year goes on. So that you can see how we're performing compared to how our forecasts are changing. That's all I got.
That's really good information to have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Moving on then to the executive director's report.
Hello, everybody. Hope everyone's doing well. Tonight, I was hoping to engage the board and get some feedback on upcoming project that we're working on. A few months ago, I think I reported in my report about some recent discussions we've been having with the sanitary district about maybe kind of a new concept for the Perkins Road site. Just kind of going backwards, get a little perspective and background. When we acquired the site, obviously, the main portion that most people know of the site is the dog park, which was a huge success, the largest dog park in the area. We have many, many happy members and we really strive to do a good job there. The rest of the site, obviously, that was lower and down closer to the saline area was really part of the sanitary district's Solent Farm. It was an area that they basically had different storage lagoons and had liquid storage for sludge materials. I think we know the history. There was some additional dumping and adding to the sludge ponds and over time, the area really kind of didn't serve the purpose it was intended to. And as we began to talk with the sanitary district about their interest long term with that site, I think it was a site they indicated that they needed, they would still continue to keep. But if there was another way to manage and rehabilitate the site, they'd be very interested. So I think in our long term relationships with the sanitary district, we agreed we would work on restoring the areas in hopes that maybe a future park would be established. Around 1999, 2000, worked with a couple interns, we developed a new master plan, first plan for the site. When I came to the district, there were a couple of other looks at that area. It was back in 1988, Bob Salomi's firm looked at it. And there were three or four other proposals. I think they had looked at campgrounds. I think there were some high energy, active recreational type sites, you know, mountain biking, things like that. None of which really took hold and the site kind of just, you know, continued on in its, in its current state. Since then, we've done quite a bit of restoration and we've completed, you know, the major portions of the disturbed areas. Our master plan back in 2000 was really more similar and parallel to what we would see at maybe Crystal Lake Park, Meadowbrook Park, or what was planned at the Weaver Park site is our signature parks. Large parks with multiple amenities, destination sites, included parking, you would imagine events, infrastructure, all of that sort of thing at a, at a site like that. With its location kind of on the east edge of town on Perkins Road, there aren't any established growing neighborhoods that are in the district. Of course, we're next to Scottswood and there's the trailer mobile home park just north of the site. So there are many users built in, but it wasn't a site that we could maybe affix, you know, that's a growth zone of Urbana. So kind of in that longer term in between, we've been having some more recent discussions with the sanitary district about. about the possibility of trying to open up a site maybe sooner, maybe moving away from some of the really heavy infrastructure elements, you know, building trail networks, putting in sanitary sewer, you know, electricity, gas lines, things that you might need if you're going to run a long term signature park. And really consider more of a what's the main thing at the site? And what we've kind of determined is the habitat, the destination is the restored landscapes, the unique wetlands, woodland, prairie remnants, you know, that sort of border, the saline branch in that area. Now, it's fair to say that that whole corridor has been, you know, dramatically changed and impacted by channelization. So to suggest that it's a pristine site or, you know, a remnant of some high quality natural area, is it really true? It's more of a reconstructed site, but I think what you'll find is it is turned out really, really well. There's a number of very unique features and little niche areas that have really kind of pulled together and made that site unique. It's a wonderful birding and wildlife site. And so the idea that we've been discussing with sanitary district is could we kind of forego or maybe put on hold all of the signature park development ideas? And really try to focus in getting the site open, having some mode trails, areas for people to walk. There might need to be some additional parking arrangements worked out. You know, the dog park is planned to be expanded, the parking to the east, over to the archery range. We'd also showed on that west side, a more traditional park with a shelter, parking, things like that. But there may be ways that we could increase the parking access and still allow people to access that lower reach area. I think some of the benefits in doing that is certainly right now, under the COVID, a lot of people aren't walking, looking for other places to go. I think spreading people out, giving them more options would probably really help our, you know, community right at this time. Second, I think it would be very easy to say that, you know, we're committed pretty well with our capital expenditures. We have a number of very high profile projects and it would be a probably a good long wait before we could really get down to that level of development. You know, just looking at Meadowbrook, which was kind of a blank slate when we started most of our work there, you know, it was a 20, 25 year endeavor to get what we see there today. Some of it came in the first, you know, decade or so, but it's been a continual addition since we've, you know, been at that site the way it is today. So we've been talking with sanitary district and want to engage the board in kind of your opinions on that idea. We would really hope to like to do something in maybe 2021. I think it's the sanitary district's 100th anniversary coming up. And I think they thought it might be a nice way to coincide. An announcement of that proportion that would coincide with their 100th anniversary. As far as naming, you know, I've been a strong proponent of trying to come up with a, what I would call a better, more suitable name for the site than the Perkins Road Park site, which was more of a working title with Judge Weber right next to it and its history has already been defined. You know, it wasn't like we could expand it. And again, the sanitary district owns it, would probably likely continue to own it. But the reality is we could have a park and function, you know, for really a long time to come in the future. So given, you know, our current needs, which are additional walking areas, nature, getting people outside, exposed to, you know, a site that might be brand new, opening a site up that has neighborhoods right around it that could certainly use some, you know, places to go that are within walking distance, we think might have some merit and be a, you know, a good idea. So tonight I wanted to kind of hear from the board, is that an idea that we should continue to pursue? We can certainly work on more details. We would want to update our plan. While we don't have hard fast dates, you know, looking at the end of, you know, sometime in 2021 might be a good opportunity if we could at least make an announcement. If that was something that we weren't interested, we would certainly let the sanitary district know that, you know, wasn't really where the board wanted to go with that. We'd stick with our current plan, continue to work on that as as resources were allowed. But I think, you know, my my opinion on this certainly would be it would give us all the benefits of what we could use and really accentuate in that part of town today. And it still could keep an open door if there are more intense or different uses, you know, for the future. So with that, I can answer any questions about that, but I am curious to hear what the board would think, what what kind of advice and direction you'd give to the staff. And I do realize if we had a new updated plan, certainly we could look at the here and now and see what was proposed. But I think if you visualize the site, sort of take out all the heavy infrastructure and think of a heavy path site that would get you the highs and lows of that site, there could be, you know, numerous loop trails that would really start to fill that area. Each one could be distinctive and, you know, ultimately could have interpretive information, you know, that would let people know what they're seeing. But that's that's the general idea.
And I would also add that, you know, when we did our updated trails master plan, it reflected some of this thinking, you know, that we wouldn't have as extensive of trail network down there. I think that we realized how wet the site is, you know, there's really limited opportunities without an extensive boardwalk system. And we have an existing service drive that goes down the center. And then on the north, west and south side of the previous phases, phase one and two, we've created essentially a mode trail that we use for access for maintenance that could become a future mode trail for 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 the public to enjoy the site. You know, the the master plan that was initially developed some 15, 20 years ago, Tim, reflects a very intensive investment in boardwalks in those lower areas. And what we've learned through experience in Bucie Woods is they're wonderful to have, but they're also very high maintenance. And you really want to limit them to where you really need them. We realized that with the Perkins site, you know, a lot of it can be experienced along the periphery. And that's actually been better for a lot of the the wildlife and habitat there. There's a lot of ducks and shorebirds that are kind of sensitive to people when they when they come down there. And so having more of a soft approach to the to the site, we thought might be better. I I do like it to Bucie Woods. I think Bucie Woods is having a lot of similarity in terms of not having paved paths and high intensive use, you know, pack in, pack out. I think it works nicely within that context. And, you know, Tim mentioned our signature park and the Perkins Weber Dog Park Complex is one of four that we identified in our previous strategic plan. And I think that that still holds merit long term. You know, we have Bucie Woods within Crystal Lake Park. This could be the lower wetland area within that complex. But currently, a lot of the rest of the site is also undeveloped and serving other purposes. And so this seems like a way to get folks down to be able to enjoy what's a pretty exciting site right now in a passive way like we do in Bucie Woods.
Did want to add one other probably important fact Derek and I talked and talked with Rick Manor about is level of accessibility. We certainly want to create an accessible experience for anybody. Certainly anybody that could get down to the lower areas would be able to access the site. But if somebody was very limited in their physical abilities, I think the part of the plan that we still would like to hold on to is the idea of some sort of overlook that from the upper levels, somebody could access the site, still get the interpretive in sort of message and the takeaway, and certainly be able to see a large vista, you know, visual access, learning about the site would certainly at least meet that that, you know, basic accessibility interest that that we would, you know, link in want at any other site. So those are kind of the basic premise or ideas of the site. And we thought we would engage the board tonight, see what your thoughts are.
Do you guys still have a blueprint of that site? I'm just trying to think visually where that area is. Do you guys have a blueprint of that?
Yes, we do have the master plan for the site as well as the aerials and complete documentation of all the restoration, you know, work that's taken place.
Right. Do you have one that we can see like right now?
Oh, tonight.
Or no?
Not sure what we can pull up easily.
Just a second. I'm certain that we've got the the phases of restoration available.
Derek, do you have the material that you've shown the natural area committee readily available?
Yeah. On my desktop, I'm on a laptop, so I'm not on the the network, but I can.
Okay, well, Derek's looking.
I'll say that I think that it's a really great idea. I mean, in some ways, we're sort of scrolled away that land and no one, except for the dog park portion of it, has really had access to it, unless they had a key to the gate. And it's it's a terrific space. I think that we have taught our residents to appreciate wild spaces, even though our wild spaces are pretty tame. And this is just kind of the next level up. And I think that we wouldn't have any difficulty attracting people to that spot, partly just because there's a bit of topography and, you know, the birders will be out there like, you know, fleas on a dog. Because it's a it's a great place and you've got, you know, that low basin to the, that must be to the east and then that area behind the, is it the car? All those wrecks, whatever that place is.
Max recycling?
Max, right, right. So you've got those, you've got those two, those two wet spaces. And I think if you provided a bit of of accessible area so folks could get a couple of overlooks and then had a lot of soft, well, not a lot, but had soft, soft path slash trails. So nothing that was expensive to put in and or maintain. It would it would be terrific. And then we're we're sharing land that we already have. And none of this precludes the kind of use we're thinking of long term. And it may also help us identify what people are interested in, how they're using the site so that our our final build, if you will, out there will be much more in tune with users than maybe it would have been if we had just said, well, this is how you're going to use it.
I have walked most of that site, both on special birding expeditions when we were given, when Audubon was given permission to go on birding trips and also on workdays with Matt. And there really isn't any other place like it in in either Champaign or Urbana in in terms of the variety of wildlife. And like, and like Nancy said, the the topography, I mean, you don't get, you don't get broad vistas in in Champaign County and you really have it here. And you can look out and you can see the geese and the ducks kind of rise up off the ponds. And and I I think it would be a wonderful opportunity. People don't have to be birders. They don't have to be like super into nature, but I think that they would experience a great deal out there. I think there would need to be some adequate interpretation. I like the overlook idea too, but I but I think as long as there are, there's interpretation, there's rules, there's limits on what people can and can't do there, I think it would be a tremendous use of that of that space and an economical use of that space.
Yep.
Well, I'd just like to make the comment that financially, we're really not in a position to have three active use signature parks in Urbana. I mean, it's just very difficult to imagine either from the capital standpoint or from the operating budget, trying to convert that park into something as active as either Crystal Lake or Meadowbrook, given our current budget realities. And at the same time, as has already been said by both Nancy and Roger, I mean, it's it's a tremendous community asset. It would behoove us to try to find a way to make that accessible for the community to use. And so I think this is just a wise idea. And, you know, 20 years down the road, perhaps if if Urbana grows enough, you you take a little different approach to it, but why shouldn't the community enjoy it in the meantime?
Yep.
You all see this? Okay?
Yep.
Yes.
Good.
So this is the the gravel drive that comes down from up top. The dog park is right up here. This is that field area. And unfortunately, off screen is this Perkins Road. So this whole lower area is where the former sludge lagoons were. This phase one area is what we first restored back in, I think, 2004. Phase two A and two B were restored about three years later into Upland Prairie with a pocket wetland. This is the most recently active sludge lagoon. And this, along with this area down here, what just got restored or in the process of getting restored, the remaining sludges were embanked along the edge to create more of a natural kind of profile. And then it's all been capped with clay and topsoil and planted. Currently, the route that staff used to access the site, also where you put and prescribe burn breaks, is to come around this bluff area up here. And then this raised ridge that separates swale between Max and the site. There's a raised swell system, a ridge here that's dry. And then along the saline here, there's a former game trail, deer trail, that has been opened up through the work of a steward there who does a lot of work. And now is really quite inviting. So we would just make this connection through here and have a loop trail through here. And then, you know, this this would really be more of a of a area where folks wouldn't have access, but would be able to view along the service drive here. You know, long term, we could talk about some possibilities up on the bluff here, but this is currently the archery range, so we want to steer clear there. The area that Tim referenced for, you know, an overlook could be on this bluff system here. You can kind of see the white contour lines. It really does present a pretty nice view of this area. Historically, the saline would have meandered up here and created this this bluff system and then returned to its route through here. So that's that's what we have been restoring. And then the former master plan. Get that up for you all.
Where would you envision people parking to go in here?
I think our first first thought was could we enlarge the existing dog park area? Some, you know, we have plenty of space in that area that we could, you know, expand parking. What we really want to do is develop some sort of update of this plan, which is a marvelous plan. Obviously, we did it in house. We're really proud of it. But it does have a lot of things going on with it. It would be a, you know, major 50 year development, you know, strategy to try to get these things in place.
And can somebody just help remind me where the smell comes from? It's not this place.
Across, across the saline.
But it's like, we're at the Care Street facility, we often.
Yes.
So does that impact this park at all? Or the way?
You know, this region of Urbana, depending on which way the wind's blowing and how their plant operations are going at the time, you know, there can be some odor, but I can definitely verify it's dramatically improved. I know when I came to the district, you know, that part of Urbana definitely was, you know, they called Ambucks Park Stinky Park. And I don't think you could say that today. Some people might just because of the history and their knowledge. But if you go out there and you didn't know the site, I don't even know if, you know, you would you would make that association.
I have never experienced it when I've been out there.
So again, in this this plan, you can see, you know, there's a lot of specialized areas. It's heavy on, you know, trail and boardwalk and amenity. The idea is we would want with this plan, definitely link our school tours, you know, where we make official visits and trips, you know, to educate people. I think what we're trying to do and suggest maybe in the shorter term, midterm, is more simplified version of that same concept. You'd still see the rich landscape, enjoy the restored areas. As Roger said, you know, with the right interpretation, you could understand the site, but it would certainly get us into that site a lot quicker. You know, one of the things we talk about, I know staff struggles with is, you know, where we have edges and borders. Often, one might be criticized if you rush to develop, you know, a park that primarily maybe serves people that were outside of the district. But I think you have to balance that today with the sense of equity. There are people that live in near our community, whether they're technically outside city limits or just on the other side. We know that there's, you know, under resourced people living in that area. So it would certainly open up an amenity that if we waited for this plan, you know, it'd be many, many years, as Michael said, before we could responsibly even begin to do that. So we're kind of pushed by that factor too of, hey, can we create a little bit of what I call edge equity? Where maybe people that might not get sooner treatment, no offense to anybody, just just respecting our political boundaries, as opposed to maybe opening up something that more people can enjoy sooner than later. And again, another factor is, you know, we've talked about our four northern parks being linked eventually by, you know, trails that would parallel the saline branch that would get us to Ambucks, to the Cur site, you know, Chief Schamager, to Crystal Lake. I think moving in that direction, getting people familiar. I think moving in that direction, getting people familiar, walking out that site would only create more interest in that. We're going to need a lot of support, you know, to do right away acquisition or find partners that would work with us. You know, give us a little sliver of land to slide that, you know, future trail right through that. But I think getting people familiar with this site and seeing the rich benefits that it really does provide could only help that.
Well, I think too, there's a lot to be said for having a big area that's not a signature park in the sense that our signature parks are really pretty, they're pretty well, well cared for. Is not the right word and tame isn't the right word. But this, this is, this is a, you, you have to think a little bit more when you're out. You know, it's not, it's not all, it's not all perfect. It's not all spiffed up. So you get a better sense of the wild, which I think is not a bad thing for people because there's, we have very little of that around here anyway. And, well, you know, you're not going to have wild, wild. This is, it, it's nice to have it a little unpolished, I guess, is how I would say. The others are polished.
Yeah, I, I think I would, you know, if, I like the idea of opening access. You know, but not, I mean, that is a beautiful plan. But I also agree, it's an expansive plan. But I would just encourage us to, to also like, if we're going to focus on, I think I heard you say earlier, but, but to focus on also interpretation and education. Because I think, because so many of our parks are more polished or parks are polished, that's an important component about educating the, the people who are attending. And that, that's an opportunity to explain why we, this is maybe different, what is unique about this, all those things.
One of the things that surprised me at the last natural areas committee is I found out that we are deliberately creating habitat for snakes. And who does that? I mean, where, where else in the Air County or maybe in the Air Region do you, do you create habitat for snakes? But snakes are very important and that, that's, I, I think that's a wonderful thing.
You shouldn't have told.
I know. Obviously, we don't want to overcrowd the site, so I, I would volunteer not to visit. But no, actually, the area that was, area was pointed out is really cool. And I, I think staff did a great job kind of re, reimagining that space. And you're right, Roger, it's, it's a unique space. It's a great habitat for, for snakes.
We just won't go there.
Right. LaShonda, I don't want to put you on the spot, but did you have any thoughts? We were trying to do a takeaway of all the commissioners' thoughts, just, you know, are they leaning toward that or not?
I think it's a great idea for, you know, the area to, to have more connectivity out there. And certainly I would agree as far as the budget right now. But certainly something to keep in mind for future purposes for interpretive, I agree.
You know, it reminds me sort of like I, I, this May, I was at the Bruce Hannan Levy Trail, which is, which is very wild and it's, you know, just a simple path, but it's, it's a nice path. But they've done some work with interpretation and an app, if I believe. So that was, that was, I can't remember, I'm looking on my phone for the app. And there's this app for state, Prairie State. You guys maybe know this already, right? So it had information about it and I downloaded it and the beetles were there in May. So it was like, oh, here they are, these green cool fluorescent beetles that are running around. So I think there are things that, that you can do that are, are, I don't know if it's low cost, but adds value to the experience while keeping it wild. And it's all part of that interpretation.
Yeah, I think it would be fair to say interpretation could start out simple. Maybe it's yard signs, maybe it's apps, things like that, QR codes. But eventually, you know, you could imagine much more detailed things like we have at Meadowbrook and Buzy Woods. You know, that do a better job of interpreting. It also could include programming. If there are program options, I'm sure Corky's staff, they're super creative. There's probably any number of their rec divisions that could come up with exciting activities, whether it was in, you know, person guided or remote. And again, I, I'm pleased to hear this because I think we were kind of struggling at that point of having technically a restored site, but not necessarily the interest, you know, to open it up. And that would keep us sort of locked up and people out. And it's just such a rich area. We, we started thinking, what else can we do to get people access? And it really literally came, came down to, why can't we just open it? And it, and feature the walking in nature as the premier elements today? And work toward, work toward a future, you know, vision later. And if this one sticks, it's not a bad one to have. You know, if you think of our signature parks, they're all totally unique. They have their own stories and histories. So having one that is completely unique and doesn't really have anything similar other than maybe like Buzy Woods, I, I think would speak well of the, the park district. And certainly having a partner like the sanitary district, you know, where we've worked with them for many, many decades. And I think they're very committed to the project. You know, financially speaking, I think Rick was pretty clear, you know, they leased the site to us. I think if there were justifiable costs that would, you know, maintain or hold the integrity of the site, they could likely see some level of partnership. It would probably be more on the park district side as far as managing the site, you know, day-to-day operations. But there could be a number of opportunities we, we could work, you know, together on. So some of the thoughts we had were maybe do a quick updated master plan or some sort of plan that would let us lay trails out, call out the, you know, major features or stops, things we'd want to interpret and talk about and come back to the board and take another look at that. But we are trying to work in a, in a fairly accelerated pace just to try to meet some of the interests, you know, the sanitary district has for next year. You know, again, they've been so good on our side, tenant to our schedules and needs. I think it's something that really captured their attention and they could see themselves as a true partner. I think I mentioned in our reports or other brief reports, there's a couple of similar sites we'd like to go visit. Kind of see what we can learn there, talk to any of the site managers. But I think we have enough basic information that we could really start, you know, moving in this direction.
And whatever signage is, I mean, that are off-road that will kind of gravitate to people as they're passing by to, you know, get their attention. Kind of like Meadowbrook with the new signage and everything. But you seem like you have more, there are more frequent visitors at Meadowbrook, you know, signage that is visible for, for even those that walk by on the paths and everything. So.
Right. One thing we did discuss quickly, I should mention in case anybody was wondering, you know, with the dog park right next door, loose dogs running and nature don't always mix. So I think our assumption would be, you know, it would be a no-dog area. We would think about that and certainly would have to kind of put the wildlife in the habitat first. I think given that we have so many other sites and parks where dogs are certainly welcome and a beautiful, huge dog park just at the site, that seems to be a reasonable, you know, situation. Sorry, Nancy, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, that's okay. I'm, I'm thinking about, I mean, growing, growing up in Minnesota now, I'm thinking about Bruce's cabin on, on Lake Superior. My guess is that when Bruce bought that piece of land, there wasn't much of a, I know there wasn't much of a cabin. And he would have been just as happy to go down and sit on those lichen-covered rocks and look at the lake. So that's kind of where we are now is we're sitting on the rocks and looking at the lake. And then, you know, you add a little cabin that you can be at in the summer and then you add some insulation. And then you add room for guests and, you know, so that's how I see this progressing. Till eventually you have kind of a year-round cabin on Lake Superior. And eventually we will have a year-round wildish kind of park out there. But it's, there's nothing wrong with starting at the real basic, sitting on the rock level and just adding to it as money and time and, and interest pushes us along.
Good thoughts. Anything else?
Well, I, I would just say though, we have to have our eyes open. If, if, if we make this more accessible to the public, we're also going to have to assign some staff time to making sure that, that things don't get off the rails in some way because we open the gate, but never go down there, look and see what's going on. So we're going to have to find enough in the way of resources we can defend what we're trying to put together now.
Right. I agree, Michael. We certainly have talked about that. We need to maybe put some more information together just to, you know, be certain we can share everything with the board so we have clarity. And again, I think our idea of a pack-in, pack-out, kind of a low-volume sort of an approach would be where we start. You know, I've talked with Derek and Derek, if that doesn't work, what would we do? Well, we, as Michael said, we'd have to invest somebody's, you know, staff time. So we'd want to be sure we could do that if we got to that situation and not have our back against the wall at that point. A little bit of margin, you know, to be sure. But it would very much be a simplistic site, the way Nancy described it. Certainly you can grow that with more resource, more, you know, more inputs. But it certainly gets us into a new site. And I think we could really, really kind of grow a, a following for that, that park site. We're hearing, go ahead. Any other comments? Staff comments?
Matt, Matt does frequent the site currently. You know, he's actively stewarding all the former phases. We'll have two years of stewardship from the contractor for the area that's under stewardship or under restoration right now. And then that'll become his. So, you know, he'll have a presence there for sure. That is probably a good example of where it's different than Buzy Woods though, Michael. It's just that Buzy Woods being adjacent to a, a major facility and a part of an active environmental education program has more staff visitation from other areas of the district. The rest of our staff, other than Matt, don't spend a whole lot of time in Buzy Woods unless they get a, a work request from the nature center or the like. So that's something that, that we will think about. I, I know that the Forest Reserve District has a vast network of trails that sometimes I think they, they perhaps, you know, need to figure out how to, how to make sure they're keeping eyes on it. And the trail steward program was part of their answer. We might consider something similar. But good thought and we'll work on that.
I think our next steps would like to be get back with the sanitary district to let them know we had a conceptual thumbs up by the board and that we want to do some more serious planning and partnership work and gather more information, but kind of move toward that timeline that they're suggesting. Again, I continue to urge us to think of a new name. I, I think it'd be great if both boards got together and pitched some ideas and see, see how that works. Again, they own the site, so technically, you know, they might want to come up with a name. But I, I think it's really begging for something else as opposed to the Perkins Road Park site. It's a mouthful. It doesn't really describe the site. You know, if you say Meadowbrook or Crystal Lake or Weaver in the sense of historical figure, you know, it means something. It says something to you. I've had more people over the years just, hey, is that, what, what does that mean? And I always just tell them it's a working title. It's a site that isn't really open to the public by and large. And when that day comes, I'm sure we can, you know, do it right with a, with a new name.
The only other thing I wanted to mention, I, I think you already did, but I really want to credit the sanitary district for their partnership on this project. They deserve an awful lot of credit and they've invested in it over the years. You know, of course, we're, we're, we're also helping. But celebrating the partnership with, with the opening will be something that we can really recognize their, their dedication to the site. Because it comes taking a very different approach to this, this site. And instead they saw its value and I think they approached us.
Yep.
Yeah.
Worked with three directors at the sanitary district. You know, they've all been very, very open and very positive about our relationship. And so, you know, many other groups could have thrown up big fences with huge padlocks and just said, we'll deal with it another time, you know, no, we're not interested. Instead it was, yeah, what could we do together? And the result has been a fabulous site that's really almost the size of Crystal Lake Park. And I think having some good news and something to cheer about in Urbana next year would be great. Any other parting comments on that? That was my main report tonight. I wanted to have a little bit of discussion and kind of engage all the commissioners to see what, what direction we wanted to go on that. But we'll be happy to get back with them and continue working on it.
I think this is just another example of your guys' really forward-thinking approach to the Urbana parks. And I congratulate you because there aren't lots of other entities that I think are looking that carefully about ways to use what they have. So top, top-notch work.
I predict it'll be a, a huge success when, when we open. And I think the feedback will be great. Certainly we'll have some new, new problems. You always do. But I think they're worth invest, investing in. Great. I can answer any questions. Just conscious of our time tonight, I didn't want to go too long in the verbal report.
Okay, hearing none. And moving on to the president's report. Just a reminder of upcoming meetings. We've got October 6th is our study session. And as I believe Katie mentioned earlier, the, the matrix teams are going to be a part of that. And then on October 13th, we'll have our, our regular board meeting and including review of the annual audit, which is always another one of our fun events.
Eat for yourself, Michael.
I, I was being a little facetious, but it's an important. Moving on to the liaison reports, the finance study group. We actually last met on the 20th of August and have, I think, I think all the things we were discussing there have already come before the board since. And we are scheduled to meet again on the 25th of this month. Is there anything to report for the policy study group?
We have not met.
Okay. And then moving on to Parks Foundation representative Roger.
The foundation will meet next Monday, so we have not met since our last board meeting.
Does anybody want to comment on the, on what the, how the foundation is working with fundraising group and what they're, what they're doing?
Sure. As you know, we have a steering committee, which is kind of a hybrid of board, staff, foundation and volunteers. We're kind of leading that charge on the main fundraising portion. The rest of the foundation is going to be, we'll have an opportunity to have the training that CCS provided. All of us on the steering committee, most, most everyone that was present took the, the training. It was very good. I think it builds a lot of confidence. It kind of provides you an outline that you can go back to it time and time again. I know I'll be looking at it each time before I, you know, go meet with a donor just to make sure all the, kind of the parts are in place. We have a list of top prospects and everybody's been assigned their groups. I think the goal is to work through those groups. And it's very likely we'll have additional groups. We'll be reaching out to people, you know, community at large, businesses. So we have a, quite a bit of work to do. But the goal is to get everybody on those initial lists connected with a meeting to at least share our opportunity with them.
Good. Thanks.
Tim, the, the foundation members not on the steering committee had their training this morning.
This morning, thank you.
Everybody is on board.
Good. Great. And again, just because we have a steering committee, that doesn't mean other people can't or won't be engaged. I'm, I'm sure there'll be foundation members that will be talking to other people. So we look forward to that.
Yeah, I just wanted folks to know that it's well, that there's actually stuff going on.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of activity on that front.
Well, I think it's fair to say, I don't know about the other staff, we can barely keep up. They keep cracking the whip. There's every, every day there's updates and there's new work every single day. Each week that goes by is critical that you can't let anything slip. And I think we're so far holding on to schedule, but now we're ready to start our meetings. And again, we have a list. If anybody can think of additional people, please send it on to any of the staff groups. We'd be happy to talk to anybody.
Anything else on the Parks Foundation? Moving on then to the update, that planning study group.
No, we're good through the end of the year, right, LaShonda?
Yep, we are.
Okay, then. Let's move on to old business. The first item there is actually. The first item there is actually to approve an intergovernmental agreement for facility use with the school district.
Yes, I believe you all were aware, staff brought up preliminary draft of the proposal to you a month or so ago. The premise is basically would the park district allow permission by the school district to utilize three of our buildings as off-site learning centers? Obviously, we know that students and schools are not in this quarter. That was a sort of a latter late decision made, but the goal is still to get this IGA approved. We're not certain what will happen next quarter. In talking with, you know, Jennifer at the school district, I think her goal would be to get this in place. Whatever decisions they make, this would be one in place that they could utilize whenever needed. And the other factor is the sites could be utilized as learnings, you know, access sites, computer sites, if you will, hotspots where somebody could go and, you know, grab Wi-Fi and have some sort of connection there. So that level of use, we certainly can get more information on. But Corky's and his staff have been working very closely with the school district, you know, when that'll occur, what changes will need to be made. So tonight, we have this updated IGA in front of us. There are a number of comments, I think, made. We hoped to have captured them, working with Matt Dearing and Susan Nichols, who's the attorney for the Urbana School District. I think they've tried to capture all the comments, and this is what we have in front of you tonight.
I had a question on the, I guess it's paragraph one under now therefore. Are they going to attend, will they be at our facilities on their remote learning days?
Yes.
Yes, that would be the idea, so.
That's.
There isn't going to be direct teacher-student interaction, they're just going to be on computers, so. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was right, because I had thought that they were going to be sort of mini classrooms. And that's not the case.
So the plan is that there's a A group and a B group. So there's a Monday, Thursday group that will go to school. On Tuesday, Friday, then, they would come to our site. And they'd have an after-school leader there kind of helping the students, but yeah, it's during their e-learning. And just one quick bit of information, Tim mentioned they may use us yet this quarter, at least two of our facilities. The plan is for them to send out a survey to parents on the need of, you know, an e-learning site. And if there is a need, they do plan on attending, coming to Phillips and to the Nature Center. Brookins is not a need until the second quarter because what they're doing at Dr. Preston Williams School is they're setting up the gym right now for e-learning. So due to proximity, they don't need Brookins, and we have a lot of need for Brookins as well right now with the Lahip program extended through, through the 18th of this month. So Lahip is the group that helps pay, helps people, gives them assistance with their utility bills through the county. So they've been using the gym since early August. And then the gym will also become a voting facility for early voting, starting that next week after the 18th. I think it's 20, it's like a week away, 25th, 24th, somewhere in there. And that'll go through the actual election, November 3rd. And so, the school has worked with Aaron Ammons and us to make sure that there can be a joint use of that facility for voting and for the school stuff. So.
One of the things that I didn't see, and I just may have missed it, there's a lot of, a lot to go through here, was there didn't seem to be a requirement that if one of their students, faculty, staff test positive, that they need to notify us of that. And similarly, if one of our students or staff test positive, that we need to notify them. I mean, we do have shared restrooms. I know we're not supposed to be in the same place at the same time, but it would seem to me if that's not in the agreement, it's something that we ought to consider.
Roger, I know we talked about it when we met with them. They have their protocols, they're already in writing, it must follow. We have ours as well, we could certainly make note of that. I don't know if that's sufficient for tonight's business.
I think the other part of that is when you have that public health designates what happens. So, you know, if we had someone, we need to let public health know. And as far as the school would have to do that. So, public health would be also telling us what needs to happen, I guess, whether it's the park district or the school district that has a positive case.
And again, I think in item nine, at least it does reference, you know, guidance from the CDC, IDPH, you know, all the likely authorities. I think that's, you know, basically they're on top of that. It could change, certainly, and they change often. So I think that was probably the intent there, that we would follow those guidelines, you know, cleaning. Any changes that are, you know, communicated would be communicated back and forth. I know I certainly don't have a concern that, you know, that that would be an issue or something that would go missed.
That's what we had to do at the county is when someone came, you know, came in contact or was exposed or, you know, didn't, wasn't directly affect that, we still had to refer to, to the public health department or guidance, so.
Right. I would agree with LaShonda, at least the part I, at least of understanding, you know, we have our protocols in writing, but we're always looking and updating and checking and listening and talking with others, you know, to make sure there are new, well, a good example, I think there were new symptoms that were just added to the list that were not previously on those lists. Some of them are a little bit unusual, but that list is growing larger. So that's an example of new updates that we now say, yep, those two.
And we are doing, Roger, contact tracing. So somebody comes into our facility, they have to sign in approximately what time they were there. You know, were they feeling well, whatever. But if somebody called in and said, hey, I was at your fitness class at 1:00 yesterday, and I just got a rapid screen for COVID, and I'm positive, we're going to call public health, we're going to give them our contact tracing, the school's doing contact tracing. So all that, I mean, it's a protocol, and it's so that everybody is accounted for in the facility. So it being overlooked or missed is nearly impossible, just based on what you would need to do from a guideline perspective.
This is more of a comment that it's not a question of if, but when there's a COVID. And so, making sure people are comfortable with that, like staff, like they have all the training that's needed. I have a recent anecdotal experience of somebody in a school who, an employee had COVID, and so they had to list everyone they were in contact with. I think, I think it's a little bit slow right now. I'm sure the university is not helping that case, but in general, the CU public health department is not responding as fast as they had been, I think. Thank, again, but we have, we are contributing a lot to that, or the students are contributing a lot to that at the moment. And so, I don't want to say that it's not a well-oiled machine, but it's not. I mean, it's, it's just something I just, I hope staff feel comfortable with it. I mean, and the ones that are in the buildings that are going to be operating buildings and it, I just, yeah, comfortable with the situation and, and are educated and feel like they have the agency.
I think we've done a number of things, you know, walking through the buildings with public health, getting, you know, all those recommendations. I think Corky's done a good job talking with the staff at each building to make sure what specific concerns, and is there, are there ways we can address those? You know, the simple, easy thing is just to say no, we're just not going to do it, and then we don't need to worry about any of the things we just talked about. I think staff's understanding that it's a crisis for everybody, and when you have larger spaces, it's pretty important right now. By the way, a side plug for Health and Wellness Facility, it's not the wrong time to build a facility like that. I think our current examples would say it's the exact right time to do it. Back to the conversation, though, you know, I think we're trying to find a way to say yes and factor in as many of these concerns as we can. There's certainly no doubt is maybe same, some risk compared to just saying no. But the reality is somebody could go to the grocery store, you know, pass somebody on the street, and, you know, something could be exchanged at that level. So we're trying to take it as carefully and as thoughtfully as we can, covering everything that we possibly could think of on both sides to find a way that we could maybe bring a level of comfort to the families with school kids by being able to spread.
I'm not at all opposed to it, Tim. But I think Meredith makes a good point, it's not a case of if, but when, there will be.
We agree.
There will be COVID, and probably they'll have to shut down at some point and come back and, you know, like virtually every other school district is faced with. As long as we're ready for that, and as long as there's communication, and it sounds like there is, then that's fine.
Yeah, I would agree, and I just want to be sensitive that often the lowest-paid worker is the one who has the highest level of exposure. Especially when we think about custodial staff and things like that, so.
Yes.
Again, in reading the agreement, the school district is going to send in their custodial staff to look after their exclusive spaces, though, right? So we're not exposing our custodial staff to the exposures of, to the students and, and school district staff, at least in those exclusive areas.
Correct.
It would just be the shared areas, and there's some risk there, obviously, but it's, it's not the whole shoot.
Right, yeah, I think Meredith's comment is correct, and Michael's is correct as well.
Randy Ashman, the school district today, he, the director of their operations, and he confirmed that their, their, their own staff would be doing the cleaning. We weren't certain whether they'd be contractual or their own, and it'll be their own staff. Additionally, they'll be bringing in their own cleaning supplies that they've been using to sanitize at district facilities to do the cleaning. So it should be pretty streamlined.
Did you hear, you mentioned one time before that they're going to be cleaning every hour or something like that around the clock? We were in a meeting previously, someone mentioned that, is that still the case?
My understanding is some areas, like restrooms, will get more frequent, yeah, get more.
High-touch areas?
Yep, as opposed to, you know, a hallway or, you know, another space like that.
And right now, we're cleaning, especially at Phillips where we have the public coming in. We're cleaning the restrooms every 45 minutes to an hour, staff are. So that, that's kind of the protocol. When we walked through with public health, they said that was better than protocol, but that's what we're doing. So they recommended it every couple hours.
Did want to linger a second more on Meredith's statement about, you know, when it happens. You know, that's, that's a very factual point, you know, and it very well could happen. I think Derek mentioned in our first meeting discussion, you know, Champagne Park Districts had an internal incident. We may likely also, or the schools could. So the, I guess I'm trying to suggest that the practicality is likely there, and it wouldn't be a time to think, oh, I know we should have never done that agreement. Because I don't think that's probably realistic. I don't know if anybody will ever be able to pinpoint maybe where they got COVID, short of a known likely experience. So I'm just saying that it could happen, but we shouldn't shirk our responsibility to share space if we can responsibly do it.
I'm ready to approve an intergovernmental agreement for the facility use with Urbana School District, 16.
Second?
Then moved and seconded, is there any further discussion or questions on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I vote in the affirmative as well, so that carries unanimously. Moving along our agenda, there was nothing removed from the consent agenda, so there's no old business to deal with from that. And there was no new business removed from the consent agenda, so there's nothing to do there, which brings us down to comments from commissioners.
I have a quick question about the minority and women-owned business enterprise. Do we have, can someone update us on that, please?
We've got a call on Thursday with Coleman and Coleman Associates. They are ones that have been working with other agencies, MTD, school district, city of Urbana, city of Champagne, on their program to learn how they might provide some consultation for us to develop our own program. So they have a lot of expertise in this area nationally, but especially locally. We've also set meeting with the city of Urbana to learn more about their program, but the capital program and their minority and woman-owned business enterprise program. They are going to be using the city of Champagne's program, which has been around for close to two years now, and which is, I think, a really good program, it's well-developed. They have several different tiers of how they facilitate and encourage access for minority woman-owned businesses to their procurement process. And they already have a very well-developed list of people that have become certified through, through their program. We're using that list already to solicit contracts for some of our work. So in many ways, you know, we're just getting started, but it's also been a pretty intense, you know, couple of weeks getting this, moving in this direction, we're excited for where we're going.
Awesome, thank you.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to say, Derek, I really appreciate how quickly that, and how responsive you've been and the staff have been on this issue, and I look forward to what you bring back to the board.
Yes, I'd like to second that. And then just also mention, Derek, you sort of addressed this in email, but I, there's a concern about a water leak at the organic gardens. But also, it was, I thought, a community member reached out to me. There was also a nice note about the organic gardens as well as the being a great activity for her 85-year-old father. So I was, I was happy to see that, we don't always get lots of positives.
But so. I'm very excited to talk to them, I, yeah, she's been a long-term gardener with us.
Great.
Am I the only one getting goose emails?
No, I think we've gotten a few of those. They all seem from faraway places and have no relevancy, at least to what we have been doing locally. So I'm assuming it's some form letter?
Yeah, since it's all the same.
They're identical.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, the two that I have received recently both clearly come through the Defense of Animals website. And I don't know why it's picked up a little bit of dribs and drabs here lately, but.
There's a couple of things that we're aware of that are underfoot. The Friends of Geese group are trying to, are working on organizing a chapter here locally. They're going to bring in the Geese Peace folks from St. Louis to offer some training. We were inadvertently copied in some of those communications.
Spies?
Yeah. And as far as the In Defense of Animals emails, you know, I'm, I'm so, you read those, and it seems like the really intent behind them is that we don't do a call again. They're, I'm concerned that for a lot of agencies, these become annual. Well, you know, that's absolutely the last thing we want to do. It was the, it was the last thing you wanted to begin with, and we're, increased our hazing operations. We've also procured. We've also procured a new, more powerful laser for hazing that that works during daylight hours. And in talking with the folks from Wild Goose Chase that trained us on our egg depredation technique and our laser use that do a lot of dog work up in Chicagoland area that consulted with our, our dog handler on our program. They said that these more powerful lasers have about 75% of the efficacy of a, of a total dog program. So I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we'll, you know, I'm hoping that I never do a goose call again. So I'm determined. It's valuable to us.
Yeah, yeah. Do, one of the, the points they make was the fact that none of the meat was usable. Do, my guess is they do, that they don't know that, but do we know what happened to the goose meat?
We have written communication from USDA Wildlife Services that they donated and delivered the geese to a food bank in northern Illinois. So.
Good. Okay, that's good. So that they, that's just one more thing they were wrong about. I wanted to mention what a great job I thought Roger did on that article in the news, is that for the Forest Reserve District? I thought that was just, just terrific. And I mean, so, so well put, so, so well thought out. It just, it was great. And then I had a question about some time ago, at least I got a, an email asking why we had started up the tiger sharks and not done anything about naviators. So I wondered if there was, if anybody wanted to talk about that.
The naviators program was, you know, it's a summer program. There was no other, our conference didn't have any swim teams either. Technically, really the only swim programs that were going and started even before we started tiger sharks was the YMCA's group, the Heat. So we did have, Leslie did have a few people ask about the actual tiger sharks. And yeah. She also let them know that we have scholarships available. But it was also August before we started anything and technically, you know, naviator swim teams over mid-July.
Yeah, but don't they do, don't they have sort of a carryover?
That's in our, that's in our, oh, you're talking about the, there is a, a swim lesson program is what it is, is part of our swim lesson program to where they can sign up and be in this more of like a training program. But we haven't started swim lessons up yet.
Uh, okay, so if I, if somebody, so if I responded to this person, then I would, so I would tell, I think it was a hint, I would tell him that.
Once we get to the point where swim lessons start back up, that program will start back up.
So and that will, and that's.
Year round.
There was, there were no other, right, there were no other teams in the naviator conference over the summer. So that was why none of that was happening. And once this tiger, once swim lessons start again, then the kids who had been swimming with naviators will have a chance to kind of a in-training part of swim lessons. Does that?
The ask was about conditioning, so not about competitive sports.
Naviators conditioning is what they call it.
Okay, very good. Okay.
And yes, so once we, once we start swim lessons again, that'll be happening again.
Okay, very good. Yes, Meredith, I was talking about third grade swim lessons and water aerobics the other day. And the, well, there were only six of us there. But five of them were, thought it was a great idea. And they wondered about having a GoFundMe, because they thought $30,000. They were, they were surprised and I, I would, I'm hoping I was right in telling them that the majority of that money was for transportation. So they suggested GoFundMe, they suggested roping in the high school swim teams as a, as a part of any fundraising that we might think about doing for that. And they also said, well, why don't we raffle off parking, those parking spaces for people to paint in the, in our part of the, of the parking lot? So, you know, there were some, there were some good ideas while we were thrashing around in the water.
Well, that's good. I'm glad to hear the excitement for it. And we kind of, since COVID, have gotten off the discussion with it for a little bit. But my only concern about a GoFundMe, just so you know, Nancy, is I don't want to do it one year and not be able to do it afterwards.
Right, that's, that has been one of my thoughts.
Our most recent conversation has been about making sure it's built into the next agreement, because our current agreement expires this coming April. So we have our next round of five years. And, you know, our internal discussions, we've said, well, if it's 30,000, maybe we find, we split it 50/50 in our operating agreement and just pay for it. You know, 15 comes from Park District subsidy from rec fund or whatever. So, you know, I mean, obviously every little bit helps, but it's getting them on board with making it happen, I think, is the struggle.
Yeah, that's right. If there were any, I mean, at this point, I doubt the school district, they're just focused on trying to operate, but.
Right.
Yeah, and the, the difference now, which may be a little bit better, and we haven't had this discussion yet, is the PE teachers. When we did it before, it was, there were no PE teachers. So it was the actual classroom teachers having to bring. So we may have a little more support for it from the school district staff perspective.
Oh, well, well, that's good. And I think part of it is just kind of reminding the community that this was a part of our original agreement with, with the citizens, that this is something we were going to do. So maybe a big splashy thing, if you will, would, would be a good way to get folks in Urbana to start thinking about this and, and thinking about what a benefit this would be to all the kids. So as, you know, as another aspect of part of our, you belong here, because every kid who's in the Urbana third grade then is going to be getting this, depending on whether they can pay to come to the pool, et cetera, et cetera. So, all right, Meredith, I'll be in touch.
So we're keeping score. Keep in mind, we are reaching out to the school district to ask for support for the Blair Park tennis courts as well. Their need of renovation, so it's not just the lessons, it's, you know, Blair Park as well. So that, you know, altogether, it adds up to real money. And, yeah, not that I'm, not that I'm opposed to it, I think we need it on both. But, you know, there are at least two, two needs there.
Right, and in ways it's worse than the tennis courts, because it's a recurring cost.
Right.
Yeah, or an annually recurring cost as opposed to a ten-year recurring cost. Okay, I'm done. Thanks.
Any other commissioner comments? Hearing none, and I think we've come to the end of our agenda, and I will declare us adjourned. Thanks, everybody, for coming out, as it were, tonight.